Vanderwell?
She's a little late.
I'm going to make some under general business items we have a selection for recommendation to the mayor for the regional planning commission alternate that has to be re-announced and so we'll put it on the next agenda please. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So Carrie. We're looking for the approval of the minutes. Study session on May 30th minutes there. Do I have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I think the meeting minutes of May 30th look fine to me. I'll make a motion to approve the May 30th, 2017 Planning Commission Study Session Minutes as submitted.
We have a motion second please.
I second the motion.
Motion is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're looking for approval of the minutes of June 1st in which Commissioner Carey has proposed a change of draft.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I wanted to make a correction on the meeting minutes of June 1st. On page five, the sixth paragraph, I wanted to clarify the comments that I had made with respect to the marijuana code amendments. And so the mock-up that I provided to the commission on Tuesday kind of clarifies and adds what I believe to be for those. So with that, I would make a motion, if it's acceptable, Mr. Chairman, to approve the June 1st Planning Commission meeting minutes with the corrections.
Stand by please.
Can you hear us now? How about the people further back? Sir, would you mind moving up front, please? I'm afraid this is about the top so it can get on these.
Thank you, sir.
Is that any better? Thank you.
Would you have the record reflected at 6:05 Commissioner Vanderwell present?
Thank you Doug, I was just going to say the same thing. We have a motion out to approve the minutes with Commissioner Carey's correction.
I second the motion.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. Do we have any announcement of the committee reports?
Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, the only announcement that I would make is that the next meeting of the Planning Commission will be held on July 6th and as per the discussion at the study session on Tuesday, the study session for the July 6th meeting will be moved to Wednesday, July 5th at the regular time, given that the 4th is the 4th of July and a holiday.
Thank you. Is there any informational items? Thank you. We're going to go into the public hearing items. We're going to address first of all, PCN 17 dash 0024, consideration of a possible action to amend the comprehensive plan. Jim, I guess that's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Chairman Peterson and Sparks Planning Commission, Jim Rundell, planning manager here to present the item associated with PCN 170024 located at 3650 Weddington Road, and this is a comprehensive plan amendment. El Rancho. In the west of Sullivan and east of El Rancho. The applicant, which is the city of Sparks, is requesting the Planning Commission consider a land change in land use from low-density residential to intermediate-density residential. This is depicted in your staff report as Exhibit C and Exhibit D. And this is Exhibit C on the overhead, identifying the existing land use designation and Exhibit D identifying the proposed land use designation. This request is associated with two other items on tonight's agenda, and that being the annexation associated with PCN 16042 and the rezoning request, which is also PCN 16042 with a different applicant. The city of Sparks is sponsoring this amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map because of timing. This area that we are depicting on the overhead received a change in the land use designation when the city of Sparks adopted the new comprehensive plan. The adoption of the respective comprehensive plan changed the land use designation that was formerly on this site while the applicant had a request for a, at the time, master plan amendment in for consideration by staff. Adoption of this respective request today that the city has submitted for you would essentially revert the land back to its equivalent former land use designation. As the Planning Commission may remember, there were a lot of land use designations before and there are far fewer today, so this would be the most equivalent land use designation, that being intermediate-density residential. Again, subsequently on today's agenda, there is an application request to annex land and rezone as subsequent property. The applicant submitted all of these applications, a master plan amendment at the time, a annexation and a rezoning request for in August of 2016, and again, the city was unable to process those because of timing. This Planning Commission may remember that city staff came in front of them to present the sewer study. Staff presented that sewer study and through that sewer study, we were able to, or sewer model, we were able to identify that this respective site did not have appropriate, an appropriate amount of sewer capacity to provide any intensity or development at the site. So at that time, the applicant agreed to postpone moving forward with all of the applications. Past May, last month, the Sparks City Council approved a capital improvements plan that included upgrades to the sewer interceptor that is in Tyler Way. Tyler Way would be the area that would need, needed to be upgraded to be able to consider potential improvements or intensity at this site. This is a key factor in today's recommendation from your staff on an approval recommendation for this comprehensive plan amendment. Staff is recommending approval of this comprehensive plan amendment, but as we will discuss later in tonight's agenda, we are recommending denial of the associated annexation and rezoning requests from the applicant. The recommendation to the city council by the Planning Commission is also predicated on the Planning Commission's recommendation on the annexation. Should the Planning Commission deny the annexation, that is later on today's agenda, the subsequent recommendation for the rezoning should be the same. The city of Sparks has planning jurisdiction on the site that is identified on the overhead monitors. While this site has not been annexed, clearly as we've already talked about, the city again does have planning jurisdiction because the city exerted planning jurisdiction when it master-planned this land and included it in its Sparks, in the Sparks sphere of influence in the early 2000s. This land was included into the city's TMSA, or Truckee Meadows Service Area, a term you will often hear at the regional planning level, which is also one in the same as sphere of influence, when it was brought through as a regional plan update in earlier regional plan update processes. Currently, we are in a regional plan update process as it's required every five years. This would be a time potentially where land could be added into the city sphere or not. A majority of the land that was included in the city of Sparks's sphere of influence through that regional planning process was undeveloped land, land that may be considered as greenfield land in the north part of the city. The portion, this portion that we are looking at today on the monitor was, was included but already had large lot, single-family residential developed on the land, which is substantially different than the land that was included in the north part of the city's sphere of influence. Some of the homes were constructed back, I could trace back to the 1940s, and there may be homes that were constructed prior to that. Including this land into the city's sphere of influence pursuant to the regional plan provides the city of Sparks the ability to act in planning discretionary hearings such as tonight's master plan amendment and then annexation and rezoning that will be later on the agenda. While not officially in the city of Sparks, this land again is under the city of Sparks's jurisdiction in regard to planning and zoning regulation, and that is identified through the regional plan and through the state statutes. A change in the land use designation is not an entitlement, it is not a permit to develop the site. It's simply a change in the land use designation for what should be planned further into the future. And again, as I identified earlier, a change in this land use designation to intermediate-density residential would simply be reverting it back to the designation that was most equivalent to what was on it prior to the adoption of the new comprehensive plan.
If I could interrupt, what is the purpose of identifying spheres of influence around municipalities?
And the, through your attorney's question, our attorney's question, it is relatively complicated, but one of the, one of the rationales to providing a sphere of influence is the area into which the city would reasonably grow into when the, when that demand for growth occurs. And that's why I identified the areas that were included in the north part of the city that were logical extensions of city limits over time. It's staff's role and the Planning Commission's responsibility to identify when the timing of that is appropriate. So that identification of a city sphere, and actually Washoe County has a sphere of influence that identifies where they would do more dense type of development, also create a situation where you do not have jurisdiction shopping, so you don't go to the city of Sparks and Washoe County and see where you can get the most bang for your buck, if you will. So those areas are all laid out in the regional plan and this area was included in the city's sphere. Your staff is recommending approval of this comprehensive plan amendment based on finding CP1 through CP4 as outlined in your staff report. I will now go through those and highlight the rationale to these, to this recommendation. Finding CP1 requires the consideration of how this amendment complies with the regional plan. Again, as discussed in depth, this area was included into the city of Sparks's sphere of influence or TMSA in the early 2000s. With the recent adoption of the capital improvement plan in the city, last May, by the city council, this amendment would comply with goal 3.5 of the regional plan, which is coordinating facilities and master plans to support development. Finding CP2 requires the consideration of implementation of goals as listed in the Sparks comprehensive plan. Goal MG4, goal MG6, and goal H1, excuse me, and goal H2 are all goals that have been outlined in your staff report as promoting this land use amendment. This is not to be confused, though, with the annexation that will be considered later today on, on today's agenda and the timing of when those goals are appropriate. Finding CP3 requires the Planning Commission to consider the surrounding land use designations and compatibility with this land use amendment request. Most intensive zoning designation that would be permitted at this site on an intermediate-density residential designation would be single-family 6 or SF6. Finding CP4 requires public noticing. The application was publicly noticed and a neighborhood meeting was held on June 6th where 25 people attended. That meeting was also attended by city staff. Concerned that that neighborhood meeting included but were not limited to traffic impacts, improvements on Weddington Road, density of development, and increased crime and pedestrian traffic. Staff is recommending approval of this comprehensive land use change for this site, and again, the city of Sparks is the applicant on this request. At Tuesday's study session, an amended motion was handed out to each planning commissioner, which included a resolution number in the motion. Staff has also communicated with public works staff and confirmed that the city of Sparks does not provide any maintenance on Weddington Road, that it is fully maintained by Washoe County. And this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I can answer them now or later.
Surprised the concerns at the neighborhood meeting? You listed off traffic, increased crime, and things of that nature. Does this agenda item impact those concerns in any way? And if yes, could you explain, and if no, could you clarify, please?
It'd be my opinion that the concerns that I identified in my initial presentation are not appropriate to the land use amendment request, and that is what I alluded to earlier in the presentation when I said, this is not an entitlement. This is a request by the city of Sparks to amend the land use designation. It does not permit the construction of anything at the site. It simply, simply provides a mechanism to provide for future infrastructure impacts by a land use designation. So to, to, to bring up those issues such as pedestrian movements and traffic impacts and the maintenance of Weddington Road are nothing that actually city staff or the Planning Commission could require of this request to be fixed or addressed. That would be the opinion of staff.
So if not here, when would those issues be appropriately considered? At what point in the planning process would, would those issues be addressed?
I think later on in your, in your agenda today, you, you will review an annexation request. Through that annexation request, there is an item that you're becoming familiar with, a fiscal impact. That fiscal impact identifies a potential project at the site. So when you come to, say, a tentative map stage and you're actually looking at what types of density will occur on the site, what type of impacts would occur at the site, that's the Planning Commission's opportunity to consider staff's recommendations on potential public infrastructure conditions that may be upgrades to Weddington Road, it may be upgrades to, or inclusion of sidewalks, it may be sewer upgrades. That, to me, would be the appropriate time to consider the impacts that were brought up at the neighborhood meeting and the impacts to that infrastructure at, like, a tentative map stage.
Anyone who wish to speak on this item? Oh, you have up to three minutes. And I need you to please state your name and then...
Fill out a card, please.
Oh, yes.
Chairman, members of the Sparks Planning Commission, for the record, my name is Greg Evangelatos. I'm a professional planning consultant. I'm involved in, indirectly in this item, but involved in the next two items as well, so I'm representing the landowner. I always wanted to express support of the staff-initiated comprehensive plan amendment. I think it's consistent with the surrounding area and it reflects, basically, the adjoining surrounding land uses insofar as the city of Sparks is concerned, and I believe that the intensity level that's being proposed is, is appropriate to the area.
Would you please fill out a card? Anyone else who wish to speak on this item? Sin?
My name is Lucy Allen. I'm resident on Weddington, 3883. My husband actually submitted a letter to you guys, Michael Ukraine, and I thought he brought up some good points that should be considered, mainly the fiscal impact. It says right on the page, I think he was, mentioned it a little bit, but it's to the idea that, you know, the funds generated would be about $140,000, but it would cost, you know, $470,000 for the road for the frontage to get in there and build stuff, so you're already at a fiscal loss. Besides that, it is a major impact on the neighborhood. Weddington already, it's hard to get out on the road just with one car. Imagine if there's, say, 60 more cars getting onto that road, it's going to be crazy. There's no shoulders, there's no sidewalks, so there's going to be a lot of M and O domain that'll have to happen, which would be, I think, a big issue. And beyond that, I think it's a very cool historic neighborhood that's very unique to the city to have with all the horses and the sheep and all the super old houses with land, so I think it's important that we can keep it that way, especially since there's so many other areas that are being developed right now that are better fit for a higher impact. As I understand, this land can already be developed up to, I think, at least 10 houses, which would, you know, be fine. I don't think anybody's against that, but just upwards of 30 houses in that lot is, it's insane. It would have to be some sort of... Oh, I guess it's on the annex, I'm sorry. I'm jumping the gun a little bit. Okay. I apologize, I wasn't sure if I was going to miss my chance, so I just wanted to get in for that.
You'll have plenty of chances on there.
Can that be recorded for the annex later, my comment?
It's going on.
Be noted? Okay.
It's a matter of record.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, somebody was saying something. I really appreciate it.
As long as we cleared up the item.
Yes, thank you. And I like that the staff is recommending denial on that, too. I think that that speaks volumes, so, thank you. Sorry to interrupt the wrong part.
Anyone further? Be sure we're on the right item. And if there isn't, then I'll bring it back to the commission for a discussion and a possible motion, please.
Chairman, I have a question for staff.
Oh, Jim, turn my back, please.
Jim, with the proposed IDR land use designation, my understanding is under the new comprehensive plan, the max...
Well, I think we had upwards of 60, and we ended up with about 20.
And I think that that was a port of, essentially, the reason is to reduce the number of land use designations, and it got cut, cut off there as opposed to what it formerly was cut off at.
Back here to bring it back again to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right.
I move to approve the comprehensive plan amendment adopting resolution 215 and Board of...
Recommendation of certificate for the comprehensive, excuse me, comprehensive plan amendment associated with PCN 17-0024 to the city council adopting finding CP through CP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
We have a motion?
I second.
I second.
Motion. Question? All on paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next public hearing agenda, which would be C, PCN 16042.
Chairman Peterson, Planning Commission, Jim Rundle, Planning Manager, here to present this item on a voluntary annexation request and a rezoning request in association with PCN 16042. This parcel is 3.47, this site, excuse me, not parcel, this site is 3.47 acres in size and is located at 3650 Whittaker Road. Exactly the same as the item we just considered for the comprehensive plan amendment. This is the existing zoning at the site. A little bit difficult to see, but the black and white line represent the current city boundary. And you can see that the parcel here that is green, depicted green on this map, is not including the city of Sparks. Neither is the parcel to the east of the parcel, of the respective site, and you can see the city boundary here. This request is from the property owner, property owner, and I'm not sure how to say it, but Lisha Liu, and the applicant's representative is here in the audience. Staff is recommending denial of this annexation request. Should the planning commission agree with staff's recommendation and make a recommendation of denial to the Sparks City Council, the subsequent vote on the rezoning request would be a recommendation of denial to the city council. This area was included in the regional plan update process in the early 2000s, as we talked about earlier. Through these updates, the City of Sparks exerted planning jurisdiction on that land when it came into the City of Sparks' sphere of influence. The annexation request is within the Sparks' sphere of influence and is also contiguous to the City of Sparks. And that was demonstrated earlier with a contiguity on the west and contiguity on the When considering an annexation request, the state statutes, the regional plan, the comprehensive plan, and even the Sparks Municipal Code all come into play. The state statutes require an annexation to be contiguous and in the Sparks' sphere of, or in the city's sphere of influence. The state statutes also require the planning commission to consider all of the items identified in A2. The regional plan through the settlement agreement required these same conditions to required to be considered by both the City of Sparks and the City of Reno. Therefore, the city adopted those requirements into the Sparks Municipal Code. Finding A1 in your, as identified in your staff report, can be met as it requires that the city consider if it's contiguous or not. Finding A2 requires conformance with the Municipal Code findings. These findings require, among other things, for the planning commission to make a number of considerations for a recommendation to the city council on an annexation. Staff has identified that while this site meets some of the considerations for annexation, the site would not promote the recently adopted comprehensive plan, goals and policies in regard to cost-effective provision of services and capital facilities. It is staff's opinion that it would also not be fiscally positive over 20 years, which is one of the comprehensive plan requirements. It is estimated that $473,000 would be, a $473,000 deficit would be generated to the road fund over 20 years by the construction of single-family residential at this site. The single-family residential construction was identified through the applicant's fiscal impact analysis. However, the applicant's estimate was that the city would only incur costs for the area of the road right in front of the respective site. Essentially, well, Ian, can we zoom in?
Yeah.
Is it this one?
Thank you, Ian.
So the applicant's fiscal analysis identified the area in, just in front of the, of the parcel, essentially from the I over to where the green meets the yellow. With the creation of a subdivision, which would be required to, to implement the applicant's fiscal analysis, the City of Sparks would then be required to annex the entire portion of Whittaker to, from Sullivan to El Rancho. And that is required in the state statutes for the creation of a subdivision, excuse me, sorry, for the creation of a subdivision on former county land into the City of Sparks. When you consider that the city would have to take the entire road at the creation of a subdivision, staff estimates that the $473,000 estimate could be three to four times higher, making the project fiscally negative to the city. Even at two times higher, the proposed project, as depicted in the fiscal analysis, would create a deficit to the City of Sparks. While the city has approved a capital improvements plan that would provide sewer capacity for intensity for this area in the future, the improvements have not been completed at this time, and the city cannot provide service today. Finding A3 in your staff report identifies that this is within the Sparks' sphere of influence, and the planning commission does, in fact, have planning jurisdiction to make a recommendation to the Sparks City Council on the proposed annexation. Sparks Municipal Code limits the planning commission's decision-making to recommending approval or to recommending denial of this annexation request to the Sparks City Council. Public notice was provided on this project, and the annexation was noticed to all of the property owners within 750 feet of the respective site. Again, staff is recommending denial of this annexation request. Should the planning commission uphold staff's recommendation and forward a recommendation of denial to the city council, the rezoning application should, in staff's opinion, follow suit with the recommendation of denial of the rezoning, as there is no ability for the governing body to rezone the request because it's not annexed into the city. Similar to the annexation, there are findings that this request does not comply with in regard to the rezoning. Finding Z1, as listed in your staff report, requires a consideration to the comprehensive plan of the City of Sparks. Staff has outlined goals and policies of how this request would, in fact, comply with the recently adopted comprehensive plan in terms of housing and in terms of infill development. With recent capital improvement plan approvals, the rezoning could potentially promote certain types of housing and facilitate infill development. However, this rezoning cannot be considered in and of itself as it is tied, as it is, in fact, tied to the annexation. And staff pointed out earlier that we estimate this annexation of the site would not provide for a fiscally positive project, which is a requirement in the recently adopted comprehensive plan. Finding Z2 requires the consideration of compatibility. Should the site be developed under the proposed zoning, the maximum density would be approximately seven dwelling units per acre. Within this neighborhood, there is a variety of housing types, from 6,000 square foot lots with single-family, a church, and larger lots with single-family residential on those lots. This request was also publicly noticed along with the annexation request, and those two requests were, were sent to approximately 130 people complying with the requirements set forth in finding Z3. As described earlier, staff is recommending denial of this request and, and is recommending denial of the annexation request. It is staff's opinion that a governing body could not recommend approval of a rezoning if the parcel is not annexed into the city, as I described earlier. And that completes my presentation.
Mr. Rundle, I'd like to explore the fiscal analysis, if we could. Are you prepared to talk about that generally?
Okay.
Okay. The deficit of approximately $473,000 that's tied to road maintenance along the frontage of the site, is that correct?
The analysis of, it is, it, as I understand, and Armando can correct me, as I understand, the applicant identified the $473,000 deficit to the road fund, but that was only for the area to be constructed in front of the site. Now, with the development of the intensity that was outlined in the fiscal analysis, there would be enough density to overcome that $473,000 deficit. But if you did the subdivision, as I described earlier, you, the City of Sparks would have to take the road from Sullivan to El Rancho, and the, the maintenance of that entire portion of the road would be three to four times higher than 473,000, and that would make the project fiscally negative to the City of Sparks.
So the city staff is basing its, its conclusion that the, the ultimate development of the proposed project would be fiscally negative on the basis that the entirety of the road between El Rancho and Sullivan would need to be annexed into the city and maintained by the City of Sparks, is that correct?
Based on the fiscal analysis that's listed, the project, the project that is depicted in the fiscal analysis, yes.
And the basis for having to take that road is the development of a subdivision, is that correct?
Correct.
Subdivision has a technical term. Do you know what it is off the top of your head?
No.
Okay. Could we have someone come down and describe a subdivision versus a parcel map versus...
Oh, I, I see what your question is. A subdivision would be the creation of five parcels or more. Currently, there's three parcels on the respective sites, so it would be the creation of five or more parcels. The state of Nevada identifies that requires the tentative map process as opposed to a parcel map.
So because the proposed project, or at least the proposed project that's considered in the fiscal analysis includes the development of 30 houses, if you were to not include taking the road because you were developing less than five, so four or fewer, I guess you could develop one more. Do we have any idea what that looks like?
So your question is if they developed 30 units on the existing parcel?
No, my, my question is if they weren't going to develop a subdivision, right? So subdivision is five or more. They presently have three units. So they have one left without creating a subdivision. What does that look like? Do we know? No?
We do not.
Not prepared for sewer in that area either, are they?
Well, and that was, I, I talked about that in our previous item, that, and a little bit in this item. The City of Sparks has, last May, the city council adopted a capital improvements plan, improvements plan that would accommodate development at that site. I don't know what type of density or intensity it could ultimately accommodate, but it would accommodate intensity and density there. But what I was saying with this item is it's not in the ground today. It wouldn't be able to accommodate that development today. It is something that would be implemented with the implementation of that capital improvements plan. So it has been, has been approved in that respect.
Chairman?
Yes.
Jim, could you kind of give us an overview of the NRS requirements for, if this were to be annexed into the city, we would have, the city would have to annex the road, and you had mentioned Sullivan to El Rancho. And that's because the primary access point would be, would be, would be off, off Whittaker of a future development?
The state requirement would be the annexation of this respective site, say that it was ultimately approved by the Sparks Council to approve this annexation. With no development on the site, the city would be responsible for the area of Whittaker directly in front of this parcel and to half, half of the street, half of Whittaker in front of this parcel. But what the fiscal analysis identifies is sub, a, a, a density and intensity that would be required to offset the cost of, of development. If that subdivision were to come into the City of Spark, well, if that subdivision were to be approved by the City of Sparks, then the City of Sparks would have to annex the road of Whittaker from El Rancho to Sullivan. It would have to annex the whole road if there was a subdivision done on the parcel.
Are there any other areas in the city with, with new development that we've come across to similar issue where, you know, there would be a fiscal impact from annexing a section of the road because primary access would be served that may have affected our staff's recommendation for approval or denial?
Well, it was a consideration of the annexation request that was presented to the planning commission and city council on Highland Range, where we, we identified the issues with not only the road taking of the, the inclusion of the road, it's not a taking, but the inclusion of the road and sewer impacts to the sewer system. And prior, prior to that, Sparks did, did have to take La Posada when we annexed, I believe, Cimarron in the north part of the city, which provided the primary access. And once the subdivision was created, Sparks took La Posada to Pyramid Highway in its entirety.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the Sparks Planning Commission, my name is Greg Evangelatos.
I'm a professional city planner, and I'm here representing the applicant, Lisha Liu, on this request for annexation as well as a rezoning. And I respect the staff's perspective on this because the staff, the staff has to look at the overall general welfare of the community in terms of health, safety, and welfare. And so this is a, this is an honest debate, an honest discussion. I don't, I think, it's, it's the challenge of infill. And that's the, that's the nature of, of some of the challenges we're facing because, quite candidly, and I, I had a role at the City of Sparks years ago, this property was in the sphere of influence in 1992, 25 years ago. And these locations have these challenges. Infill has challenges that greenfield development does not have. And I understand the triggering mechanism, although I, I do have a question either for the city attorney or, or for Mr. Martini and his staff. There appears to be an annexation across into the northern part of Whittaker, which is in the city. This, I guess, that parcel, I don't, I can't get to it for... So there's a parcel in, in the, in the northeast quadrant of, of... I'm a professional city planner, and I'm here representing the applicant, Alicia Liu, on this request for annexation as well as a rezoning. And I respect the staff's perspective on this because the staff has to look at the overall general welfare of the community in terms of health, safety, and welfare. And so this is a, this is an honest debate, an honest discussion. I don't, I think, it's the challenge of infill. And that's the, that's the nature of some of the challenges we're facing because, quite candidly, and I had a role at the city of Sparks years ago, this property was in the sphere of influence in 1992, 25 years ago. And these locations have these challenges. Infill has challenges that greenfield development does not have. And I understand the triggering mechanism, although I do have a question either for the city attorney or for Mr. Martini and his staff. There appears to be an annexation across into the northern part of Whittaker, which is in the city. I guess that parcel, I can't get to it for... So there's a parcel in the northeast quadrant of, I don't have a pointer. Please.
All right, Ian, we're gonna need you. I'm getting too old for this.
Yeah, the parcel that is on the north side of Whittaker that was brought into the city, somehow that penetrated northward into the county. You have about 75% of Whittaker on the south side in the city of Sparks. So it just seems to me to be a very strong technicality that this parcel becomes encumbered with that responsibility. And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with staff's perspective in terms of the cost of the infrastructure. However, there are responsibilities that are cumulative and are to the public rather than to the individual property owner. There are certain things that the city should do because it's in the best interest of the community, and to be quite candid, it shouldn't be just a pure dollars and cents discussion. Because if in the regional plan you believe in infill, and in your comprehensive plan you believe in infill, and you believe in affordable housing, this particular area allows for a more entry level and/or empty nester housing that adds to the spectrum of housing. The fact that infrastructure is challenged here, we understand it. And in fact, when we made the request, Mr. Martini and his staff had some concerns about Whittaker that they expressed to us. We understood that. The issues of the sewer were expressed to us, and so we deferred this for fully 10 months to allow for the city to evaluate the potential solutions. Number two, the tentative map process and the final map process take fully a year to consummate. And so I think the issue of sewer should be fairly well coordinated within that framework. And that's also at the risk of the applicant, because if the sewer's not there, they can't go forward. But the tentative map, I think, would answer those issues. So it does come down to a fairness doctrine. Because if this particular property bears the brunt of infrastructure, if you want to call them shortfalls or deficiencies or inadequate design by the county, then that cost falls on this property, and it basically encumbers this property and takes its developmental value to virtually to zero. And I hate to say this, as long as I've been associated with Sparks, historically, we've always looked for what is a fair and reasonable solution. So I understand it, and the applicant is more than willing to pay for their fair share of infrastructure that directly relates to their portion of the development. But there have to be trade-offs. If infrastructure and fiscal solvency, which 20 years is projecting quite a ways to say that the tax structure of Nevada 20 years from now is going to be the same as it is today, that's a static view of how municipal finance and development function in this country. So I think, while I appreciate the fact that the analysis was done, what you have here is a catch-22. Because density would allow for the fiscal impact to be less, so if we had 30 or 40 or 50 apartment units for the sake of discussion, that would carry the load. The reality is that that is not compatible with this particular area, and we agree. We agree that we want to develop something which is compatible and sustainable in this part of the community. But I think you have to look at a number of trade-offs. And again, my professional experience with the city, La Posada was a part of the sphere of influence, and it was a major investment on the part of the city to cure some of the ills, particularly relating to drainage. But that is also a cost of growth and development that has to be anticipated. You cannot say as a municipality that you're totally neutral and not involved in some of the upgrades that you need, i.e., the sanitary sewer collection system has to be upgraded. That's a responsible action on the part of the city. We're going to be paying for it through sewer fees. But as cities grow and evolve and change, infrastructure has to be rebuilt, it has to be reconstructed. And again, we are not arguing that we will pay our fair share. But to basically say that a segment of roadway that is physically way beyond the needs of this particular project is a fairly undue burden. And that's just my professional call on it, and we can have differing points of view, and I respect the staff's perspective on this because they're supposed to protect the cumulative public interest, and I don't have a disagreement. But we also have the issue of the developmental suitability of this property, and the highest and best use is of a relatively low-density residential, and we would comply with those requirements. So then the question becomes, is there a portion of this which should be absorbed because there are other properties which will benefit in the future in terms of development? So that's the trade-off, and this happens to be the triggering mechanism. So, again, from the annexation perspective, I believe that it meets the state requirements relative to contiguity. It's surrounded, it's within your sphere of influence, it has access to utilities and infrastructure. And I understand the issues of the deficiencies on Whittaker and that there would be some requirement for repair, but I do not know if that's something that has to happen instantly or that has to happen over the next two, three, four, five years over time. I think that's kind of a, that's kind of a black and white situation that's been presented to the commission. I don't know that the city would have, you know, four or five years to cure it and to deal with some of the perceived deficiencies in Whittaker and the responsibilities. The other thing is, as a growing city, you are going into new areas where you have unanticipated impacts. And so I think that's part of this process. So in conclusion, in summary, I think this is a very, very good infill project. I think it meets your community needs relative to your comprehensive plan and your adopted goals. And I think we can cure the infrastructure challenges that the proposal presents. And so with that, I'm requesting you consider approving the annexation and the rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On this, again, anyone in the audience which to speak? You have three minutes, again.
Just, I wanted to address the property to the north, because that's actually mine, the one acre. And it just isn't the same because it will be kept as a single-family residence. We're not, we don't have any plans to develop that. We want to hold true to the area. We really think it's special, and it will stay that way, so it won't impact Whittaker. And I do think that this has to take the brunt of it because nobody's saying that we can't develop there. I think we just should keep it at the low density that it's at right now, which allows for some development, which I think would be great. But moving it to the intermediate density allows for so many homes there that would just have to be like a kind of mobile home or tract housing. I don't think it would have a positive impact on the houses around. I think it would be negative. So, thank you for your time.
Was this?
Yeah, that's my...
Demo from your husband?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
I'm Mrs. Kaylin, I'm at 38831.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, please come forward. Don't forget, oh, you signed your card. You need to, after, you, you go, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Good evening.
We need a card from you when you're through, please.
Would you like for him to go first?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm a homeowner here in Sparks. I'm very proud of my home.
Please, please state your name and address first, please.
My name is Walter W. Willis. U.S. military retired or 100% disabled veteran. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My home is paid for. It's one of the most attractive homes in the area, which is in this yellow area right here on the end of Delaware Court. When I heard the affordable housing, that was a negative term to me. Anyway, I know that other individuals perhaps have an intention of perhaps making money on this, but I don't think that my home should be, the cost or the price, the value, I'm sorry, should be deteriorated. I didn't come prepared to speak, but I'm opposed to it. Thank you very much to the committee.
Sign a card.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much.
Very much.
You only need to fill out the one card. Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Anyone else?
Chairman, Mr. Councilmen's and whoever's here, planning commissioners, my name is Frank Begoti. I live at 3515 Whittaker Road. I've been there since 1954. Now, I'm probably the oldest member here regarding this neighborhood. I've seen a lot of changes. I'm not, my family was in construction. I know Gino Martini personally, family-wise and whatever. But we're not here to discuss that. We're here to discuss what's going to be going on as far as the zoning. I know it's, that's happening, but the zoning is my concern. Furthermore, down to the, the map's gone, but down to this east, years ago that you guys allowed development there, but you dropped the traffic to the south. Now, I don't know if this is possible, I'm here to drop the traffic to the south. Not in a way that might be a feasibility that can be looked at. Another thing is, my property is close to the center of Whittaker Road. I picked up to the center of Whittaker Road. And I do not know where the center of Whittaker Road is to this day. All along Whittaker Road, that way. But I'm opposed not to the annexation, but to the zoning. I lived there in 1954, my family are, and I've seen a lot of changes in my life. This was a country road, and before you do any planning, you have to look at what are you going to do, i.e., with what's going to go on, the pole in high school. On the other side of Whittaker Road, are you going to make that four-lane and then impact all that? So are you going to make that four-lane? So here's the question before you develop something, make sure you look into the whole picture. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Wanda Cocaine at 3720 Whittaker Road, and I too have been in Sparks since 1954. Mrs. Liu is an investor. She has properties all over town, and we all know why she wants it rezoned strictly to build 27 houses. And there's no way that, I don't cannot, I don't believe that can remain a two-lane road, it's going to become a four-lane. And those houses were built in the 1940s on that street in Sparks, and there was 20,000 people in Sparks. There were 30,000 when I was growing up. There weren't that many cars on Whittaker Road. And you put your carport right at Whittaker Road, you put your shed, you put your garage, you put your, that's all going to get tore down. We will probably lose our entire house. Her tiny house sitting on her acre will go if you guys put a four-lane road in there. And I cannot imagine, Mrs. Liu has nothing in mind except to build 27 houses, millions of dollars, and she doesn't care about all of us or all the history on that road. So you can annex her, but I would ask also that you not change the density so that she's allowed to build 27 houses in our neighborhood where we have rabbits and chickens and horses and goats, and it's just going to ruin everything besides Old Spanish Springs Road, that is the last country road left in Sparks.
Anyone else?
My name is A.J. Torres-Gueyez. I actually do not live on Whittaker. I live south of Whittaker, off of Garfield. I've been a resident there now for almost nine years, and my concern, like the other residents have stated, is besides so many houses in such a small acreage is the crime rate. I'm aware of the crime that goes on around our neighborhood. I'm actually a police officer for Reno Police Department. So I know the calls of service that we get in that area and that are, excuse me, east of us. So my problem, or what I'm concerned for, my husband and my family, is that if these are going to be affordable housing, like this gentleman said, I don't know what that means. I don't know if that's Section 8 housing. I don't know what that's going to entail. But the foot traffic for me and the traffic that's going to go through on Garfield Drive, that's where my concern is. We'll have more vehicle burglaries, more residential burglaries. I have a six-year-old that's actually with me right now that I worry for her safety, depending on if the entry level's going to be off of Whittaker, and like someone stated earlier, if we're going to have it come from the south side, that's a problem for us that live on the south side of that property. So I'm against annexation. If there, if it is going to pass for annexation, I just don't want so many houses in one small section like the residents on Whittaker have stated. So I basically, it's just the crime rate, what type of housing's going to be in there, what type of low-entry affordable housing does that mean? That's very broad. I don't understand exactly what that means. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Thank you. My name is Jay Jorgensen. I live at 3725 Whittaker Road, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I just think that 27 houses is just way too much to cram into that little bit of acreage. I'm fine with 10 houses, something like that. But the traffic on Whittaker is already a danger. I live right across the street from the property that's in question, and it's already dangerously perilous for people to walk there and for people to drive there. People speed by there all the time. So that's my main concern, is traffic and just the density of housing that just...
I live at 2400 Farrell Ross Drive. We have, my parents have lived up there for many, many years, have inherited their home. I know what the impact has been since the freeway went through. Many people have found it, a great access of Whittaker Road to get to the freeway without going southbound, without having to go through that interchange. And so we have tremendous amount of traffic on that. There needs to be some type of control on that street to which we can have safety, again, restored to our neighborhood. Putting 27 more houses in there just increases that load all the more. It is already very hard to get onto the road as it is to be able to leave the neighborhood. And I thank you for your time.
My name is Peter Lance. I live at 3575 Whittaker. And this is two properties. It's on the north side of the street, two properties west of the proposed changes, okay? Many things concern me about this situation, but just to add a couple of things, you've heard a lot of people talk about density. Well, first of all, I've been there for 12 years. We understood when we bought the property that things can change over time, hopefully in small increments. But the thing is, we bought the property... the property because of the street and, and the nature of that one stretch of road from Sullivan to El Rancho was like a little bit countryish. It's got all those trees right on the road. We have trees in front of our house. Whoever, whoever wants to develop or do things to it now, you know, they just bought the property, I guess, I'm not positive about that, but I think so, lately, and, you know, at this point in time, they knew what they were buying. I'm sure they looked into it if they were going to want to develop it. So their eyes were open as to what the neighborhood was like, how many people have a large amount of, you know, an acre or two acres or more, and very few people actually along that road. If you count everybody in that area, there's not a lot of people. But many people like where we are. They like the feel of it. It feels like home to us. And when it comes, what I'm trying to say is kind of, Whittaker Road is not just another road in Sparks. You'd be hard-pressed to find another area like this, and that's part of the reason why everyone lives there and likes to stay there, because they like it the way it is. No sidewalks. The street is, you know, just too lane. Speaking about the street, I live, my house, we have, we have four mailboxes in the front near the street on my house, okay? We allow those four to be there so that everyone from across the street or whatever can pick up their mail at ours, and the guy doesn't have to come to all four different places. This has been this way since we've been there and long before, I guess. But I wanted to mention this to you. When these folks that have spoken already today speak about the idea of traffic, I'm not exaggerating, we have had our four mailboxes mowed down by a car or whatever three times because people speed like mad. And I would like to invite any of you to come out to my house and be there for coffee. I'll bring it out to you. And you sit there in your car at seven to eight-thirty or nine in the morning, and you try to get out of my driveway because the cars are just whipping through there, and also they're constant. When other people are talking about the idea of, you know, yeah, when the freeway got built and stuff, you know, people started using our street.
Thank you, sir.
That's what's happened. They're using our street, and it's way too much traffic and dangerous. Thank you. Do I have to fill out one?
Hello, everyone. My name is Hernan Aguirre. I live right in front of the proposed annexation property, thirty-seven oh-one Whittaker. Just to kind of continue with what he said, when I was looking for a home, I was looking for something that had acreage, something that had, I could, you know, build upon, have a nice yard, you know, a big section. That's why, that's what attracted me to Whittaker Road. I knew what I was buying into. My, the houses that I bought are old, but that's kind of why I like them. I knew the previous owners. During Halloween, they had a, they had, they used to do a couple, decorate their yard and stuff, and whenever Halloween Day came around for three or four hours, it was bumper to bumper because a couple of cars would want to go and check out the decorations. It pretty much just stopped the whole road. I know that Reno and Sparks is growing, and, you know, we got to accommodate for growth, but at the same time, it's not fair for the rest of the community to bear all this traffic, all this, all this upgrades that they want to do with, I'm sorry, I just don't, I just don't think it's fair, knowing the community, if they even checked it out, that they want to go in and change it. And that's pretty much all I got to say. Thank you.
Sir, anyone else?
Yes.
I have your gagos. My wife just spoke a little bit ago. Just wanted to let you guys know, obviously, we're opposed to it. We live, I can show you all quick on the map if you allow. We live just south here on Garfield. Off of Garfield, we live right here on Hawks and S Court. The thing is, we live there, and whatever happens in this area, we're going to have to deal with it. I don't know what the developer does. I don't know what she does where she lives, but she does not live there. We deal with people walking by. There's crime, as you guys can see, and everybody's, I think, is in agreement here. Somebody's going to develop the roads. The property is next to here. There's about ten homes in this area here that are perfectly fine in here now. Once again, we deal with the cross traffic. We deal with the crime. I deal with people crossing, walking through there that people don't belong in that neighborhood. Obviously, we know who does, who doesn't. Everybody in the neighborhood down south below here is in our neighborhood. We talk to everybody in every single cul-de-sac here, let alone to invite people that, I guess, once again, we don't know what type of housing. Thirty homes in that small of an area is a lot of homes. I don't know where you guys live. We live there. You guys are more than welcome to come out, like these gentlemen said, stand in my cul-de-sac. It's a very secluded cul-de-sac. We have these two churches that basically block our neighborhood here. Adding homes here just adds people walking through our streets here, through the parking lots here. And once again, it opens the neighborhood a lot more. Drive through, get out of your car and see how it feels, and just adding thirty homes in that small of an area is, to me, ridiculous. So completely opposed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sign a card.
I'm sorry. I'm slow. My name is Beth Ross. I live at twenty-four hundred Farrell Ross Drive. I married Norman. That house is the house that we had our reception in it. It's very dear to me, and we love the house. We love the area, and I have watched, I'm the queen of finding the backroads and driving around old-time Sparks and Reno, and I like to drive around and especially Whittaker Road, and I go down west. It's scary, and my husband's told me not to do it, but I still do it. And I see beautiful homes, and I think, that's probably going to be my home in a few years. These pretty old houses that are gorgeous, but they, they're in a rotten area, and I've seen the crime just keep marching eastward from on Whittaker. And you can't imagine all of the sirens and the lights that we see at the corner of El Rancho and, and Whittaker. And I've got a sister-in-law that lives in my neighborhood, and she's had people just walk in their house and burglars and, and bad things, and older couples down the street, and it's, it's not safe. I like my little area. I want it to be safe. I want to stay there until I die. And I appreciate your time. I wish you would consider the, the people who are impacted by this.
My name is Ron Russell Lance. I live at thirty-five seventy-five Whittaker. I'm a Realtor, and I understand what affordable housing is. I also know that this parcel was purchased back in twenty sixteen, and I also understand what annexation and, and the subsequent density change entails, and I know what, what comes after that. I feel that this woman purchased this place just to, you know, as many developers do, they don't live in the area. They don't, it doesn't impact them. They're not familiar with them. They just want to make money, put as many homes as they can, cram into, you know, a certain amount of space. But this is just a little two-lane road, and the crime, I mean, I know at Frank Bagotti's house, there's been like bullets in, in his wall and everything, just, just as it is now. I can't imagine having affordable housing with, with a bunch of new homes in there. The impact with the traffic and the crime, I'm very concerned with it, and I'm very opposed to this. Thank you for your time.
My name is Ron Cocaine. I live at thirty-seven twenty Whittaker, their little slice of property just east of, of the said property that we're talking about. And before they've even built their houses already, they've got several tenants over there. And just last night, about eleven o'clock at night, they pulled into my driveway, got out of their car, started looking around. Four people, supposed to be in, at their house. This happens probably once every two weeks, and once they realize they're not even in the right property, they're, they jump back in the car and they speed off and throw gravel and run over my rabbits, my chickens. The, you know, we're, we're a country neighborhood. We're not made for medium density. I'm not saying that they can't build, you know. If I had that much property, maybe I'd want to build two, but within reason. That's all we're asking is, don't let them take over our neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I will close the public hearing on this, bring it back. And I, since we had this spouse speak on this, I would like to note that we have a, a letter of opposition to this, and I want to be putting the record, and you won't have to read it then, Jim, because we've had this spouse speak twice on this. So let the record reflect that we have this letter from your husband. And close this public hearing. I'll bring it back here now to the board and for a discussion and a possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll kick it off if that's all right. Appreciate the public comment this evening. I think we heard from everyone in the room. From this commissioner's perspective, certainly appreciate the work of our staff in looking at the fiscal impact of this issue, you know, with, with this. The fact of the matter is, the way I'm looking at it, if we annex this piece of property, the city would have to take over Whittaker, and fiscally speaking, you know, that is not acceptable to the city. I think that the estimate we heard from staff is that it'd be two to three times the four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar estimates. This is basically, you know, in our, from what we've heard, this would not be a fiscally positive project for the city, which goes directly against one of our most important comprehensive plan goals of being fiscally positive. I, I, I think there's some other, you know, I do agree with NRS in that, you know, if you're going to have the primary access served into the city, it's got to be brought up to city standards. If we were to do that, just not fiscally prudent at, at this time.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we do have something we need to clear up for the record.
Entertain a minute from staff to make a clarification? Would you entertain a minute from staff to make a clarification? Yes, sir, as the chair. Okay. In regard to Commissioner Carey's comment, I just want to make it clear that the annexation of this parcel would not require the City of Sparks to annex the road in its entirety from Sullivan to El Rancho. The annexation of this would require the city to annex the portion of the road in front of the requested site halfway to the center line of Whittaker.
Mr. Rundle, what, what is the triggering event that requires the city to take the road from?
Thank you. So the triggering event would be, as we talked about earlier, if, if the applicant went forward and requested a tentative map and was granted a tentative map on the site, the creation of the subdivision, the final map, the creation of the subdivision would require the city to take all of Whittaker from Sullivan to El Rancho.
Basis for the city's concern that a subdivision map would be filed is what?
Based on the fiscal analysis that was proposed with this project would be the creation of a subdivision, and that's what the applicant used in their fiscal analysis to make the claim that it would be fiscally positive. But if the city approved a tentative map and parcels were ultimately created through a subdivision map, it would not be fiscally positive because the city would have to take the road in, on both lanes from Sullivan to El Rancho. Did you want me to fill out one of these cards?
Twice. Any further discussion on this or any motions?
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification from, from, from staff. I think with, with respect from what I just heard, I cannot make finding A two, just to clarify that, with, with respect to the annexation. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully make a motion to forward a recommendation of denial to the City Council of the voluntary annexation requests for PCN sixteen zero four-two, based on consideration of findings A one through A four and the facts concerning these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second to move it on. I'll second to move it on.
All in favor?
Actually, before you vote, there is one thing that I think we should, we should hit on again. Mr. Rundle discussed it in his initial presentation, but before you vote on this matter, you should be aware that it would be incongruous to vote to deny the annexation and then vote to approve the rezoning, because the city only has authority to rezone property that's actually within the municipal boundary. And so if your thoughts on the rezoning are different than your thoughts on the annexation, you should consider that before you vote.
But we have to take them separately?
Yes.
We have to vote on the?
Yes, you need to vote on the annexation and the rezoning application separately. Presently pending relates only to the annexation.
I. And you vote? Ayes have it. Now, we'll, we'll, we'll take the second part of that, as you said, would be the zoning portion. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So we'll entertain a motion on the zoning.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, a motion. Obviously, since we did not approve the annexation, we, doesn't make sense for us to rezone the property. Therefore, I would move to forward a recommendation of denial to the City Council of the rezone for PCN sixteen zero four-two, based on consideration of findings Z one to Z three and the facts concerning these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion here. We'll move on into the general business now. I looking for, since item ten has been struck, I'm looking for a public comment. Three minutes. You can come up. Yeah, please, please, please exit quietly. We've got to finish the meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Public comment open for three minutes for anybody wants to speak on anything. I'll close the public comment, bring it back. Comments from the commissioners?
Frank Bagoti. I live at 3515 Whittaker Road. I do know, I do know that eventually you're going to have to address what's going to happen with this area. And I appreciate you guys considering what you did tonight. But in the, also in the future, all I can say is, is good planning is good city common sense. And so if you plan a bottom up, it would be good. Infrastructure first. Infrastructure first. Streets, schools, parks. And when developers come in, my family was in construction for 40 years. We built custom houses for teachers, firemen, whatever. The thing is, good planning in our communities. And from what I've seen, living here for 54 years, this was an area that could have great potential. Across the street from me is Leslie Gray's old place, old attorney. I used to raise cows there, and we'd pick up. Anyhow, he passed now in the sphere of the city. It's partly owned by the university and partly owned by Mrs. Gray. She wanted to keep it as a rural area. I would have liked to seen it become an area for 4H for kids, if the city could go and raise their cattle or sheep or whatever. If that can't happen, I would like to also see maybe a park. We tried to rent a rodeo to take it over. We've tried to get a lot of things. Now, what happens to this parcel is going to be a domino's effect to the, to the west of that. So whatever happens is going to keep coming. Now, we can't stop progress. All I ask is, consider the consequences of what you do and the impact of the area. We, we have a zoning area of Washington County where I'm at. It was a one-house for a third of an acre. Now it's got to be one acre because you have to have a, one acre to put an H mail on. Well, you know, that was always there since the get-go. Now, below us, it used to be that way. Now you're trying to bring this in the city, which happens to be that you're going to have more impact. Of course, we can't stop progress. So all I ask is just your consideration of what's going to become of Whittaker Road. And it's, it's a quandrum because it's, you not only have our area, but you have over there by the, by the golf course. And all those houses. And I'm sorry, I have no time. So I appreciate your attention, and thank you for your time.
Any comments from the commissioners? Why, if not, your chair has one. We are adjourned.